All right, welcome everybody. Thank you very much for coming. This is the last Strategy and Resources Policy Committee of this municipal year. Save the best till last. And I just think it would be worth saying on behalf of the committee, thank you to the Democratic Services staff for supporting the committee all the way through the year. So, thank you very much indeed. The meeting is open to the public. Welcome, members of the public who have joined us today. The report, item 13, isn't available to the public or to the press because it contains some exempt information. So, at that point, we will switch off the web broadcast and we will ask members of the public and press to kindly leave for that part of the meeting. The meeting, as I mentioned, is being webcast and it will be available to watch. We have received a petition and a number of questions from members of the public, but due to the restrictions that need to be observed during the pre-election period and following advice from the Monitoring Officer, these will be deferred to the next meeting of the committee at the end of May after the election. And we've liaised with the questioners and petitioners and we'll come to that in a moment. Can I just ask everyone to switch phones off? There's no fire test planned. If there is, staff will direct us to the evacuation point and the assembly is in Tudor Square. I'll ask the members of the committee to introduce themselves and then we'll ask the officers present to introduce themselves before we begin. My name is Tom Hunt. I'm Leader of the Council and Chair of this committee. And I'll go this way.
Councillor Angela Rouse, I'm a member for Bloom Hill and Chelaville and Chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee.
Thanks Douglas Johnson, councillor for City Ward and Chair of Housing.
Councillor Zehira Nas, councillor for the Donal Ward and Chair of the Finance Committee.
Councillor Don Dale, councillor for Shire Green and Brightside and Chair of Education, Children and Families Policy Committee.
Fran Bellbin, councillor for First Park and Deputy Chair of this committee.
Ben Misscol, Chair of Transport, Regen and Climate and councillor for Park and Alberthon.
Joe Watson, councillor for Dorantotley and Chair of Wasteland Street Team.
Chief of Moamhead, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Hi, I'm Martin Smith. I'm councillor for Dorantotley and Chair of the Economic Development Skills and Culture Committee.
Hello, my name's Diane Hurst. I'm a member for Richmond Ward.
Thank you very much, everybody. If I could ask the officers to introduce themselves and I'll start over on the left.
Afternoon, Greg Vell, Director of Integrated Commission Public Health.
Hi, everyone. Claire Taylor, Chief Operating Officer.
Good afternoon. James Anderson, Director of Policy and Democratic Engagement.
Hello, David Hollis, General Counsel.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Good afternoon, Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Thank you very much indeed. And joining us now is Kate Joseph, Chief Exec of the Committee, Chief Exec of the Council, rather. Apologies for absence, have been received from Councillor Penny Baker and Councillor Richard Williams. As I mentioned, we're in the pre-election period, so I just need to remind members that whilst we're having formal committee meetings today, the meeting can't be used to create either real or perceived political advantage for any candidate, group of candidates or party. So, we just need to bear that in mind whilst we're discussing the agenda items today. So, item 13 is exempt, as I've mentioned. Are there any members who would like to declare any interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? None, thank you very much indeed. Item four, the minutes of the previous meeting. I'd like to ask members to approve as a correct record of the minutes of the meeting that we had in our last committee, which was on the 12th of March. Members happy to agree to this? Will you see nods? Thank you very much. Item number five is public questions and petitions. As I mentioned, due to the restrictions that need to be observed during the pre-election period, the petition and the questions that we've received will be considered at the next meeting of the committee, which will be at the beginning of the next municipal year, i.e. after the council's AGM, which is in mid-May. And on this point, the Chief Executive is going to provide a little more detail.
Thank you, Chair, and apologies for my lateness. So, as the Leader has mentioned, we've received a number of public questions for today's policy committee, which, following consideration by the Monitoring Officer, have all been deferred to the next meeting. I just want to take a few minutes of the committee's time, if that's okay, to explain why those decisions, which, as Chief Executive, I fully support, have been made. The period from the notice of election being published until polling day is known as the pre-election period and is when local authorities are required to take additional care in the issuing of publicity in all forms to avoid anything that could give rise to a perception of favouring one candidate or political party. This period of heightened sensitivity, or PERP, Pre-Election Restrictions on Publicity, applies both at local and national general elections. Guidance has been issued to all members and senior officers about what may and may not be done during the PERP period. This includes ensuring that press releases and statements are factual and that members are not quoted, that officers do not attend site visits with members that members will be present at, not that we don't begin new consultation activity, that we do not hold press conferences or photo opportunities that members may be present at. The overall objective of PERP is to prevent council resources being used in a way that could be perceived to demonstrate support for a candidate or party at the election. However, the normal business of the council can and should continue during the PERP period. This includes the holding of meetings such as this one and continuing to take decisions, although particularly controversial or contentious issues should normally be deferred to a later agenda. And the agenda for today's meeting has been very carefully constructed to ensure that the decisions to be taken are not ones that are likely to prove politically controversial. There is a provision in the council's constitution that all policy committee meetings have an agenda item to allow members of the public to ask questions and to receive answers from the Chair of the committee. It is recognised that in the majority of cases, members of the public are likely to wish to ask questions about matters that are politically contentious, and this will also be the case during the pre-election period. Asking such questions is not in itself likely to be a breach of PERP. However, providing responses to those questions, which will be prepared by officers and given by elected members in a meeting administered, facilitated and resourced by council officers using taxpayers' money, could be considered to be a breach of the PERP guidance. As such, the Monitoring Officers decided that all the public questions for today's meeting should not be asked as they deal with matters that are politically contentious and will instead be deferred to the next meeting of the committee after the election. Recognising this will be frustrating for those members of the public who would hope to be able to ask their questions today, we will consider what options there may be for ensuring greater clarity on the matter of public questions during PERP in future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Right. Councillor Johnson, just briefly?
Yes, just one question. I don't think we've actually seen the questions. Could they be circulated? I presume that wouldn't be an issue, but yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Right, item six is members' questions and they were not received. Mr Johnson, you're a regular attender at this committee. You know the rules. There are questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll no doubt see you at our next meeting. Thank you. Item number seven is retirement of staff. And as usual, I would just like to thank everybody who's named in the report for their many years of service, hard work and dedication to this council over many decades. So, are members happy to agree that report and join me in thanking those staff? Thank you. Item number eight is our work programme and I'll hand over to Craig to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. There's not a significant number of changes from the last time when we considered the work programme on 12th of March, but there are two issues that I'll draw your attention to. One is an additional item since the last meeting on Network Services Contract Award. That's reflected in today's agenda. And then the second issue is that we now have a proposed response on the council motion relating to the climate emergency. That's set out on pages 37 and 38 of the pack. Members are asked to approve the recommendations in the report.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, Craig. Are there any comments or questions that we wanted to raise specifically about the work programme? Councillor Johnson?
Can I just check that those two items that Craig's just referred to will go on to the programme presumably with the meetings that don't have a date allocated to them?
That's right, yes. You will notice a lot of empty space in the work programme for the new municipal year, but no doubt those items will find their way on to the agenda and we'll do that in a timely manner. Okay, in which case, can I ask for members' approval for the work programme? Great, thank you very much. So, item number nine, Chief of City Council's Outcomes and Performance Framework for 2024 through to 2028. And we're being joined by colleagues who will introduce the report in a moment when they are settled. Perhaps before introducing the report, you could just introduce yourself to the committee and to people who may be watching at home.
Hi, I'm James Ford, Head of Performance and Business Intelligence for the council.
Claire Taylor, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you very much. Over to you if you want to introduce the report.
Thank you, Chair. So, this report seeks approval for a refreshed performance and outcomes framework for the period 2024 to 2028. This is a companion to our new council plan and replaces the process and measures that were put in place to support our previous delivery plan, 22 to 23. The council plan, when it was approved, requested that officers go away and produce an outcomes framework to support the monitoring and impact of our council plan. Acting as a companion to the council plan is further demonstration of our continued improvement journey and also a direct response to the LGA peer review around the recommendations for performance. What I'm going to do next is just walk you through the three key principles that apply within the performance framework. They're covered in detail in the two appendices that are attached with the papers, but I'll briefly go through the three main elements. Firstly, our outcomes framework. Presented in Appendix Two, the outcomes framework are the measures and the way that we show progress against the council plan. It consists of a broad range of measures that match both the spirit and intent of the council plan's priorities. Each priority has a number of linked measures and we've worked with street directors, performance leads, to construct these measures. Within the documents is an example, using some measures from children and families, that show how we've kind of matched the choice of measures to the specific wording within the plan. We've also taken a lead really from external sources, so looking at local government inform, Office for Local Government measures and authorities that the LGA hold in high regard as being best practice in this area. In selecting the measures as well, we've tried to select measures that are available on a frequency of a quarterly basis. Not all the measures by their nature can achieve that. For example, education attainment statistics are unavailable annually, but in the main we've tried to bias it towards quarterly measures with the intention being that we bring the outcome measures here quarterly to show continued progress throughout each municipal year. We've also tried to choose measures that are nationally comparable so we can hold ourselves to account against data that's held externally through benchmarking and comparator information. As well as measures that are linked directly to the council plan, you'll also see in there it includes a number of measures around our organisation of social health, so measures around HR, finance, customer services, in particular complaints, that's on the agenda later, that are not directly linked to the plan but are key to us performing well as a council. The outcome measures are intended to come, as I said, quarterly for reporting, an annual report on overall progress and then an annual, it's intended we have an annual review of those measures. The intention is not to change them each year because we want to show distance travelled, but I imagine there will be space for additionality and adding to measures that as we see fit. The next part I'll just touch on shortly is our performance system. Within the documents, I see there's a lot of the officer governance that we'll put in place. For the purposes of this committee, we'll be asking directorates to go to the next level down, use the outcome measures to produce a further set of measures that link with the council plan, linked directly with the work of each policy committee. And the intention is that expanded set of measures will then be brought monthly to each policy committee that it refers to. We also recognise as well because of the nature of the construction of the committees, there may be some duplication of measures across some of the committees, but we think that's healthy in terms of seeing progress and how different parts of the council can see themselves and how they contribute to each measure. Lastly, is performance reporting. So, you will see within the documents that we've shared, we've produced some mock-ups of how we intend to present this performance information. Initially, that's going to be probably three static reports, but a report available for each of the outcome measures that shows how we've performed over time, targets, comparator information and provide some narrative. Our aspiration is to firstly make that available as an interactive tool, then make that available to the public and then over more time throughout the life of the plan, make that interactive in terms of being able to drill into various elements of it, applying demography, geography, et cetera, to make that truly a really open and transparent tool that can be used. Again, that was a direct kind of ask for us from the LGA about having interactive reports that were available to the general public that are used by our performance clinics internally, these boards and under public scrutiny. So, thank you, Chair. That's my overview of the outcomes and performance framework.
Thank you very much, James. I think it's really, this is a hugely important piece of work and thank you to you and the team who've put this together. In the council plan, there is a section called Making It Happen and this is fundamental to making it happen, to make sure that we deliver on the strategic outcomes of the council plan and improve our services and improve life for people in this city. So, this is of the utmost importance. I've seen a number of members who've already indicated, I've got councillor Argenzio, councillor Bellbin, councillor Misscol, councillor Smith. There we go, councillor Argenzio.
Yes, James, thank you very much for the report and also, you know, for the in-depth briefing that this committee had beforehand on this particular issue. I think it's really, it's really good and it's really promising and it's really important because we do need to measure our progress. So, I'm really kind of pleased with all the work that's gone into this. It also hopefully will give us the opportunity to be more transparent because lots of information will be publicly available and hopefully that will also mean that people don't need to put in a freedom of information through council, which means that it will then allow us to just get on with our work because the information will be publicly available and then so people don't have to put in a request. So, I think it hits a lot of, you know, targets that we want to achieve and ambitions that we have as a more transparent council. So, thank you to the officer that made this happen.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bellbin?
Yes, thank you to echo that. I agree, it's really excellent piece of work and really looking forward to seeing some of these interactive charts in action. I just wondered if you could give us a bit of a timeline for when the public might be able to expect to see some of these online and agreeing very much with councillor Argenzio. I think it's really important that this information is publicly available.
James, let me take the other two comments and then I'll come back and you can address those comments. Can I just see if there's any of the members who want to come in on this agenda item? No, okay, so we'll take two more and then come back. Councillor Misscol and then followed by councillor Smith.
Thank you for bringing the report today. I think it's really good and really timely, isn't it? It puts into practice all of the commitments that we made in the council plan and also shows just how important that document was to bring it forward and agree and pass it as a city. I think like other members have said today, I think it's also really important, isn't it? Because also it shows the culture of this organisation is changing and it's important, sort of the comments that have been made about bringing those quarterly reports to this body and it's good to see that there is a commitment from the organisation to do that. I was also particularly pleased to see that there was the commitment in there to use the best practice from the LGA, from the LGA peer review about publishing those charts that councillor Bellbin talked about on our website. And I think that's to be welcomed because it shows, doesn't it, that we're a healthy, transparent organisation and helps us keep on track. My question would be, I think, building on what councillor Bellbin said, I think it's important that we have those dashboards available as quickly as possible for members of the city, members of the public, for citizens of the city, so they can see the progress that has been made and see that we're being open and transparent. Is there any possibility that we can expedite that process and bring it forward as quickly as possible?
Thank you, councillor Misscol. Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I won't repeat the platitudes, but I agree. I just wanted to ask about the measures, but particularly the comparators. And no disrespect, but I take the easy option with quite a few of them. So, I see down under the comparators, it's core cities, core cities, core cities, core cities. And in some of the measures, particularly in the economic development area, those might not be the right people to compare ourselves against. So, for example, there are parts of the country and cities that aren't a core city that have an amazing track record in business startups and we need to be finding out what they're doing. And if we compare ourselves, so I'm not saying comparing ourselves with the core cities is wrong, I'm just saying it might be slightly limited. And also, a lot of the measures that we want to look at, again, particularly in economic development, should be on an international basis because we're competing with other cities, other major cities in other countries. So, could you give us a bit of feedback? Are we choosing the comparators because it's easy or are we choosing them because that's the ones? Because I just feel like there's a few gaps there. So, I'd welcome your comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back to James and to Claire as well, if you want.
Thank you, James, thank you. I'm going to let James talk a little bit about the process and the data and the dashboards and the challenges with that, but I think councillor Smith, you ask a really good question. And I've got a couple of reflections, if I may, that I'd like to share. So, I think, I think we have to compare because comparing gives you that opportunity to look in and challenge yourself. And to some extent, we're guided with what's available to compare, so you're actually comparing like for like. So, core cities, regions, what's available nationally, good quality benchmarks, it does give us that way in and that level of robustness. But I think the performance culture and the system that James has talked about is that idea, it's not just about comparing that one indicator at a city level. It's also about saying, and what does good practice look like and pulling the thread on that. And it's the quality of the performance conversation that happens. So, I think, I think you're absolutely right. To some extent, we're limited by what's directly comparable, but that shouldn't and mustn't stop us asking questions about what does best in class look like and if that best in class is out of sector, we should ask that. And I would, it would be fantastic to have those conversations at committee and in our developmental conversations about the council plan going forwards. So, that'd be my first reflection. And I think the second reflection as well is I think we've got an amazing opportunity with the work that's going on on City Goals to have some of that much wider focus on long-term outcomes, international comparisons and how Sheffield as a place performs, as well as Sheffield as a city council. And I think there's some space to do some really innovative work in the City Goals to help us think about city stats, international comparisons, and it'd be great to see that coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you. To come back on the questions around the reports, it's great to see there's appetite for them. So, I think this will come in stages, being open and honest. What's definitely within our gift, we can produce what the democracy, we can do that, we just need to do the work. So, there would definitely be available in a static format to support the first conversation we need to have around this in the autumn. And then I would expect that to be going incrementally live with the public reports, probably back end of 24 into early 2025, is my best estimate now where we'd be able to achieve that.
Brilliant. Thank you ever so much indeed. Really helpful comments and questions there today, thank you. And I'll turn then to the recommendations. So, it's recommended that we agree the performance and outcomes framework as companion to the new council plan. We agree that the new outcomes framework as a way to understand measurable progress against each priority in the council plan and that we agree to continue to receive quarterly and annual reports that provide an overview of performance against the outcome measures describing for performance challenges, interventions taken and the results of changes made. Annual, annually review measures in the context of progress. Are colleagues happy to support those recommendations? Thank you. I think that's a really significant decision. Thank you. Right, item number 10 is titled Future Sheffield, Digital Strategy and Customer Experience Strategy. So, it's two new strategies which we will be considering together today. And I'll ask colleagues to introduce themselves for the benefit of everyone in the room and watching online first before introducing the two reports. I won't ask Claire to introduce herself again, but Mike and Tom?
Hi, I'm Mike Watson, I'm the Director of Digital Innovation and ICT.
Afternoon, everyone. Tom Smith, Director of Operational Services.
Fantastic. So, I'll hand over to the team to present the report.
Thank you, Leader. I'm just going to kick off with a few introductory comments around the two items that you've got in front of you and then hand on to Tom and then to Mike. We have two quite significant strategies in front of us today that represent, I think, the first key outputs from the Future Sheffield Programme. And members will know that the Future Sheffield Programme is our aspirations for organisational change, improvement and transformation. In August, we started the work on the digital strategy and it's a large document in front of you. And I hope from the size of it, you can see both the amount of work and the rigor that we've undertaken with this. On the working basis that our digital support enables our workforce, our customers, our residents to access our services in the best way possible, it certainly isn't proposing a digital by default, it's understanding that digital is a really important part of enabling what we do. It's underpinned, and Mike will talk a little bit more about this, by a business case and an investment plan as well. So, it's a large piece of work recognising the amount of ambition and work to do in the digital space. The customer experience strategy sits alongside the digital work. It can't be delivered without the support of the digital strategy, but it's perhaps the most fundamental thing we could do to support and improve and enhance the experience of our residents, customers and the people we serve in terms of how they access and experience the council. So, I'm really proud of the work that's in front of us today. It is strategic, so it then requires us to invest and deliver and rightly you'll expect us to account for delivery in future committees. But I'll let Tom introduce the intent for customer experience now.
Thank you, Claire. So, firstly, just to say, I'm Claire Stiggrath from the outset, this is very much a strategy and a strategic document. It's the foundation stone of our approach to customer excellence and experience as we go forwards and we now need to do the work to actually deliver what will be a transformational piece of work for the council, the way in which we interact with our customers. In doing that, we've been really clear that this is not a strategy for customer services or the contact centre or our website. This is very much a strategy about how the council operates as an organisation to genuinely deliver really good customer experience across the piece. And what the strategy is really genuinely aiming to do is to set out probably the three key commitments that within this report around us, genuinely listening and responding to our customers in a really effective way, an efficient way, putting our customers right at the heart of designing our services, delivering our services and improving our services. So, not just about how we respond to complaints, it's about genuinely designing our services around people. Empowering people to reach the right solution for themselves by being accessible, inclusive and person centred. And Claire's talked a bit about how digital enables that for a large number of people, but actually in getting a really good digital offer, it also enables that for people who don't have access to digital because it, A, it takes, it means we can use our resources in the right way, but it also means that people within this organisation have access to information in a much clearer, more helpful way to then support people who don't have access to digital. And then finally, the big commitment is around just being clear, transparent and considerate when we interact with people. So, that we've got those right digital tools in place, we've got the information in place and really importantly that our staff have got the skills and are exhibiting the right behaviours in the way in which they interact with all the people who interact with the council going forward. So, I was really just going to leave it at that, not say a great deal. It's very much a strategic document, the big work now, once we've agreed this is going forward, our transformer approach. And I'll hand over to Mike to talk about the digital strategy.
Thanks, Tom. So the digital strategy is exceptionally linked to the customer strategy. It's a major enabler of how we deliver customer services. And it's really important, as with the customer strategy, it's council-wide. It's not just about how we deliver IT, but it's how we deliver digital skills and how we support our customers, how we use the data that we've got in terms of making our decisions and supporting those decisions and adding to the performance framework that we had earlier. But more importantly, it's about transforming service delivery across the council. It would be key to using technology, whether it's automation skills or whether it's knowledge and data and how we organise ourselves going forward to meet our financial pressures. To be successful, everybody across the council has to embrace the strategy. And it will require investment in our staff and technology. And that will need to be aligned to the medium-term financial planning of the organisation. It will necessitate investments. And those investments will go through the usual scrutiny that any contract that we let in IT will go through. Thank you.
Thank you all very much indeed. I've got a number of members who've already indicated. So councillor Belbin was first, then I saw councillor Otten, and then councillor Johnson, Agenzio, Smith. We're going in that order. Councillor Belbin first, please.
Thank you. And again, thank you for, I think, both these strategies sit alongside the performance strategy as really key documents for how the council will go forward in the future. I think at the moment, people have, you know, in some places have some really excellent experiences with the council, both digitally and non-digitally. But it's really inconsistent across the piece, isn't it? And people have to interact with all sorts of different systems. And I think, you know, when you describe this piece of work as transformational, what will really feel massively different to people is that they will have a far more consistent experience across the organisation, however they're dealing with us. I know when we talk about digital strategy, and you've both all touched on it, there is always that anxiety about the people who are digitally excluded. And we know that we have a lot of people in the city who are digitally excluded. But I think it's really important, what you say, there's a really helpful table that I'd love to draw people's attention to on page 11 of the Customer Experience Strategy, which really shows how we've really thought about how people want to interact with us as a council. There will always be people who want to interact with us face-to-face or via the phone. But regardless of that, whoever is supporting them will need access to those digital tools to give them the information that they need. So, you know, whoever you are, and even if you haven't been near a computer screen for your whole life or anything, this is still really important to how you interact with us as a council. So I do think it's really exciting piece of work. And I think, as you've described it, it's the foundation of future developments really within the council. I suppose a question I'd like to ask is, again, related to timelines. I think, how do you expect people will start to see that kind of difference? And over what kind of period of time? Thank you.
You very much. Councillor Otten.
Thanks for that, yeah. And just before I get someone coming to the paper, which I obviously welcome. Just, response to councillor Belbin, I mean, she's right in what she says about digital exclusion. I think it's worth observing, though, that technologies like email are decades old at this point. The numbers of people who are digitally excluded are a fraction of what they were when we started talking about digital exclusion probably 20 years ago. So it remains a significant problem. And what we say about it is right, but we shouldn't stay in our minds, stuck in the place we were 20 years ago when, you know, people perhaps of an older generation, we would expect them not to be able to use this technology largely. These days, they do. So that said, my comment, I mean, I welcome the digital strategy. I think it's absolutely what we need to be doing. My comment is, I suppose, that certainly in Western Sri Lanka, we've been aware in many areas that we've needed digital portals, that sort of thing, for our customer engagement. I'm thinking particularly taxi licensing. We could do a much better service, more cost-effectively, with a better digital offer. We've been aware of this for a couple of years, so if not longer. So I'm just hoping that the fact that we've got this strategy now means the whole organisation recognises what is needed and that we will get. And I realise work has, you know, work has been done on this. But I hope this means that these things will come on stream a little more quickly, if that's possible, now that we have this strategy and we have this organisation-wide recognition that this is important and really beneficial if we can get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Johnson.
Thanks. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to come in. I just want to comment on the fact that Claire used the word trans, sorry, no, Tom used the word transformational. Claire's word was fundamental. And I think it's worth just focusing on those for a moment because actually, this is a big ask of all our staff right across the organisation. So we probably need to just emphasise that we are asking all staff to step up to this, but also recognising we need to support all staff in doing that. I mean, there's some good people out there, they've been trying to do this for years. Equally, we know that, you know, not everyone's experience of trying to talk to the council has been great. I know that the full council approved the process of a customer service improvement plan at one point. And this is a really, really sound piece of work. And I'm really pleased to see it finally coming to light. So it's a bit of thanks there, but just sort of just recognising the scale of this. And just that, yeah, it won't be easy, you know. We only have the council website, it's been remarked on a little bit for the last few years. But just, you know, recognising this is a really good way forward. It's almost like putting people at the heart of everything we do or something like that.
Thank you. Can I just see if there's any of the members who want to come in? I've got councillor Agenzio, councillor Smith. Now, what I'll do then, I'll take those two and then come back to the team. Councillor Agenzio.
Yes, thank you. You know, I agree with what's been said. I was also going to pick up on the digital exclusion, but I disagree with councillor Otten. Because digital exclusion is, let's call it digital poverty, assumes that people have data. It's not about what technology you use, but if you have the money to actually have wifi at home or have a contract that allows you to use data. So I think whilst this is incredible, and we've had lots of discussion in the Future Sheffield about how people want to communicate, some people don't have a choice because they don't have the same resources. So I think it's super important, but at the same time, I want to also see what are we going to do to ensure that people who are in digital poverty have access to digital if they want to? Because people may not have a choice. Some people make a choice, they want the face-to-face, they want the phone conversation. But some people don't have that choice, they just don't have the resources. So we also need to address that. And also, I just want to pick about some language on page 105, because it just jumped at me, where it says in the middle, 74.5% of people in Sheffield identify as white-British and 20.9% as non-white. Non-white is really not correct there because I'm not white-British, but I'm not white. So non-white, there is like a judgement there. If you're not white-British, you're somehow less. So please, could we just throw to our documents and make sure that we don't use that language? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Agenzio. We can make that change. Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to build on comments from other councillors with regards to, it's not, we just need to think not just only about digital exclusion, but digital preference. So one of the charts early on in the deck, it's about 50/50. About half the population prefer to use digital, half prefer to actually speak to somebody. And I find that with my wardwork. So it's great that we've got, given that, it's great that we've got a digital strategy. But what, I don't see a strategy in there for improving the face-to-face contact or the telephone contact. I mean, it's right that the investment's going into digital. But could you give us some more detail, please, about what the strategy is for people that prefer not to use digital? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So a range of comments and questions, plenty to pick up on there. Claire.
So I'll talk first of all about digital inclusion, exclusion, and matters of skills. And then I'll pick up a little bit on your question, councillor Smith, about for people that don't want to do digital, what's the plan? And then timeframe and priorities, and I think some reflections on some of the in-flight work that we're starting to pilot. So this isn't a digital inclusion strategy. It doesn't set out actions at the moment, neither of them do, to look at digital poverty, to look at the data requirements, to look externally at the skills gap that may or may not exist within our communities to access those services. I think we need to do that. And I think that will be something we have to pick up as part of our work around equity and poverty and some of the ambitions that we set out in our council plan. So I would acknowledge that there's further thinking to do on that. And that this isn't the primary strategic intent of this document. But we do recognise it's important. We also recognise we're a public service, so we do want to offer that choice. And certainly, it's one of the reasons I started off with that this isn't a digital by default strategy. You'll also see in both the customer experience and the digital work that we're talking a lot about skills of our workforce. Now, digital exclusion and being able to utilise digital technologies isn't just about the now. It's also about as technology changes, keeping your skills constantly honed is really, really important. So you can be a 16-year-old whiz on a smartphone and gaming today. And in 10, 15 years' time, you may be digitally excluded because technology's changed. So it's something we have to be constantly vigilant about. So you'll need to see that reflected in our learning development and organisational development work. And I know that colleagues have already started talking to HR about how we can support our workforce in that. And I think what I'd also say is the supporting the workforce through great digital, it's one of the key messages that came out of our staff survey. You know, people want good quality equipment, but it's not just equipment, apps that work, for example. So even if you are delivering a face-to-face service or picking up the telephone, really good digital will help us root calls better for face-to-face. It will help people out in the field delivering face-to-face service. And we know that there are some issues, for example, with Total Mobile, which is some of the technology we use out and about. So I think seeing digital strategy as enabling good customer experience, whether that's a digital customer experience, a telephone, a face-to-face one, or actually referred and signposted customer experience through our partners, which is the ultimate ambition. So I do see them together. The digital strategy, as I said, is much further developed. The work started a good six months ahead of the customer experience. So you'll see in the next iteration of the customer experience work, those plans and actions that start to deliver not just better IT for people that serve customers or better phone routing, but also how we support people with better engagement. Thank you.
Just, I guess, just briefly to pick up on a couple of things. So I think there's a really practical example I always use when we're talking about how digital can interact and can improve the face-to-face work, for example. So, you know, and it is really, really simple, actually. We know at the moment it takes too long to get through the telephones and our contact centre. This is not a contact centre plan, this is a customer experience plan. But if we improve digital, if we get more people who want to choose digital, using digital, that will take pressure off the contact centre, meaning that people who really want to phone us or can phone us can get through the phone lines. Really simple example, but actually, that's how the digital stuff will open up our ability then to improve access for the people who need it. What it also does is mean that within a contact centre environment, we're not just focused on how many phone calls we can get through in a period of time. It means our staff have the time and space to have a richer conversation, to deal with complexity in a way that sometimes they'll struggle to do because of the time constraints and because of the pressure within that environment. So there's some real practical stuff about how digital will open up accessibility for people who aren't currently using digital, who are or are digitally excluded through means or finance. In terms of the early stuff and the moving stuff on more quickly, we have, within the work we've been doing around the strategies, and Michael talked some of the digital stuff in a second. But we have been looking at what we can do more quickly in terms of quick wins in certain spaces and reviewing certain things early doors so we can see, so, you know, improve that we're actually moving with this work. And again, a lot of that is focused actually around digital, is focused about getting some, you know, review of our website, getting an online offer improved in certain spaces. And really then giving ourselves the time and the space to get into the transformational work and the stuff going forwards. So I'll maybe ask Mike to speak maybe about some of the specific digital stuff, if that's okay, Mike.
Thanks, Tom. So looking at the digital strategy, we identified some quick wins. And some of those quick wins were addressing real problems that the council faces in terms of answering the telephone, for example. Why are people calling the council instead of dealing with us online? Well, that's because most of the journeys on our website are not easy to follow. And they get to a point where they abandon using the web and they break up the phone, which creates backlogs. I think in terms of our staff and our skills, many of the staff struggle with our old applications. The local government marketplace for applications isn't great. There's not much competition in that market, and therefore we end up with single providers. So what we'd look to do is improve the way people access that, not just our customer support, our staff, because they get frustrated with these applications. Licensing comes up to me quite a lot in terms of, it's a very old application. What we need to do is front that application to make it easy, understood for our customers. Whether through our webpage or through an automated process, we need to look at all of those and improve our customer journeys. And that's why we need to be so closely linked to the customer strategy.
Thank you all very much. I think, as colleagues have said, these are really impressive but fundamentally important pieces of work. And they do sit alongside the Performance and Outcomes Framework that we touched upon in the last agenda item as the building blocks for how we will improve the performance of the council and how we will improve the experience that residents of the city have engaging with the council. And some of the words that, you know, you've all used today, I think, are the hallmarks of where we're at on this improvement journey. Be clear that we're always listening to residents, empowering and enabling residents, be clear and transparent in how we communicate and share information with residents, and are on that continuous improvement journey. And, you know, a lot has been done, there's a lot more to do. And these documents will allow us to be that guiding light on the work on that. So thank you very much, Steve, for the work. We have a number of recommendations, colleagues, which are simply that we approve the customer experience strategy and that we approve the digital strategy. Are colleagues happy to support those recommendations? Thank you very much. Okay, so moving through to item number 11 on our agenda, the Joint Ombudsman Complaint Handling Code, which rolls off the tongue. So colleagues are joining? Okay, so before we introduce the report, we've heard from Tom already. But Paul and Jen, perhaps you can just introduce yourselves to the committee and for the benefit of people watching at home.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Paul Taylor. I'm the Head of Customer Services.
Good afternoon. My name's Jen Everall, and I am the Operations Manager for Complaints.
Thank you very much for joining us today. So over to you all.
Thanks, Chair. So this paper informs members about changes to our complaints policy and procedures following the issuing of new, more aligned complaint handling codes developed by the Housing Ombudsman and the Local Government and Social Care Ombudsman. So these codes place statutory requirements on the housing and repairs and maintenance services and set out best practice for the handling and management of all types of complaints. The codes also mean that changes are required to the council's complaints policy and procedures to align them to the codes. And you might say that's overdue because the policy was last updated in 2014. So there are two elements to the recommendations. Firstly, to approve a revised complaints guidance policy effective from April 2024 and a further revision from September 2024, along with the corresponding corporate complaints procedure. And then, secondly, committee is asked to endorse a recommendation to full council that lead member responsibility for complaints be reserved to Strategic Resources Policy Committee, a specific responsibility set out in section 1.9 of the report. That corresponding amendments therefore will be made to the council's constitution. Also, that the role of the deputy leader of the council should include being the lead member for customer experience, including complaints. So the Social Housing Regulation Act 2023 places a duty on the Housing Ombudsman to monitor compliance with the Statutory Complaint Handling Code, effective from the 1st of April 2024. This means that Sheffield City Councils obliged by law to adhere to the code and follow its requirements from this date. However, handily, in anticipation of the revised Housing Ombudsman Code being published, the council had already implemented the majority of the code's standards for the council's housing and repairs and maintenance services. And so from 1st of April 24, we fully adopted that code with monitoring by the Housing Ombudsman also commencing from that date. The Local Government and Social Care Ombudsman has the power to issue advice and guidance about good administrative practice to organisations they deal with. And whilst the LGSCO doesn't plan to fully implement monitoring adherence until April 26... 26, in order to provide consistency of standards across complaint handling and in order to strengthen our commitment to improve complaint handling, the council plans to adopt the LGSCO's recommendations for best practice fully from September 2024. This will allow time to negotiate with our third-party contractors to ensure that wherever possible their complaint policies and standards are aligned to the code. As an example, Veolia's timescales adhere already, but Amy's don't. The code doesn't apply to complaints which are subject to an existing statutory code, so this means that some complaints about children's services, adult social care and public health, and complaints about the behaviour and conduct of elected officials are not covered by the expectations set out in the code. The code sets out there should be a senior executive in place to oversee complaint handling performance, which defaults to the director responsible for the oversight of the council's corporate feedback complaints team, currently the Director of Operational Services, currently Tom. However, this role doesn't replace the responsibility and accountability of directors to ensure that any outcomes, learning, service improvements are implemented and reviewed periodically. The codes also stipulate there should be a lead member for customer experience, and this responsibility lies with the deputy leader of the council. The lead member will be responsible for ensuring that Strategy and Resources Policy Committee as the governing body receives regular information on complaints, so as to provide insight on the organisation's complaint handling performance. There is a communications plan in place to publicise these changes, and I think it's fair to say that these changes are to be welcomed as they further promote a positive relationship between the council and citizens and strengthen our statutory duty in respect of complaints. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Jen, Tom, is there anything you want to add at this stage? Okay, I will open it up then to members of the committee for any comments, questions, points we'd like to raise. councillor Belbin, councillor Otten, councillor Johnson. Councillor Bell.
Thank you. Thank you again for bringing the report, I should say. First of all, I'm very grateful that it's a lead member for customer experience and not lead member for complaints, I wouldn't really relish having that role. What I wanted to say, though, is, I mean, I know, and as a member of the Audit and Standards Committee, we've received regular reports around complaints and how we're responding to them, so I am aware that, you know, in some senses, these changes will mean that we've got shorter timescales to respond to complaints, and that in some cases we're already not meeting the existing timescale, so I'm conscious that this is a real challenge. I don't think we're particularly different to other councils in the country around that, but I think, you know, this is helpful in that the new code will apply, obviously, to every council in the country, but we do need to recognise that it will be challenging. And again, in the spirit of the other items that we've heard earlier on the agenda, you know, how we perform around this, and I think it's really significant and important that this committee starts to take a lead in overseeing how we are responding to complaints as well. I wanted to ask a question around what will be the role of Audit and Standards Committee compared to the role of Strategy and Resources Committee, just to be really clear, because my understanding is some of those, some reports will still go toward Audit and Standards around this, so I think it'd just be helpful for members to be really clear on where responsibilities lie here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Otten.
Thank you, yes. No, I'm quite happy for councillor Belbin to be the lead member for complaints, not complaints. And I share your concerns about the clarity in terms of the division of labour between ourselves and Audit and Standards. I just want to ask for some clarification on the process here, because we're adding a kind of portfolio responsibility to the deputy leader of the council, and is that, is this an anomaly that we're creating in the structure? If we don't tend to go around giving lead member responsibilities to deputy chairs of policy committees, effectively is what we're doing here. I mean, maybe that's fine, maybe it's a perfectly fine thing to do, I just want to be clear whether we've thought through the governance implications of doing that, particularly obviously as deputies also have the job of deputising for leaders or for chairs. So, and then it does say this is a recommendation to full council, so does all this go to then to full council at some point, and when is the constitutional change? At which point, you know, has this been through governance, I suppose is the other question, in terms of thinking through all these little, these kind of procedural governance issues? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll come to David in a moment on that point in particular. Councillor Johnson, though.
Okay, thanks. Actually, I suppose the reply to councillor Otten's point is, should this actually be deputy leader of the council, or should it be chair of governance, even though it's the same person? Or should it just say Fran as complaints Fran? Yeah. So, yeah, that is one issue. I think David's going to just remind us about that in a moment. The other question linked with that is just to ask for reassurance whether this effectively creates an executive role in terms of decision-making. I guess the answer will be no, but I could just do with having that on the record there. And otherwise, yeah, as I say, what is really good is that we're streamlining lots of complaints policies so that people have the same kind of experience about progressing something through the council system, instead of it depending on which department you're trying to deal with at the time. So that's very welcome. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. David, let me come to you first, just to pick up this point around lead member.
Trying to avoid the feedback, sorry, I'll close that, I wonder if it was that. So, yeah, the, there is a potential confusion here, which I hope I can clear up. So the guidance that came out was very much focused on executive councils, and therefore was looking at a lead member as being the executive member. When you dug into the guidance, what it said was that the lead member can be a committee, and therefore the way it's drafted is that the lead member stroke committee will be this committee. The role that the deputy leader has is promoting these matters rather than being responsible for them. So it's a task role as opposed to an executive or being given an executive function or anything like that. So it's not, it's not creating a portfolio, it's creating a role similar to those that chairs have and the leader has and the deputy leader have, which is a role to promote these things.
I think that clears it up very well. The Chief Secretary.
I just wanted to make a sort of related point that I think is quite important. We are increasingly seeing that almost every piece of requirement that comes out of government assumes an executive model of governance, and I think one of the things we need to do as the first lengthy course city so far with a committee model of governance is, in the coming municipal year, be quite proactive in our relationship with government about saying how they need to think about what that looks like, because it applies in numerous aspects, working with many, many partners, and I think we need to be a bit more proactive on that.
Okay, that's the same.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the role of Audit and Standards, I think there is still a role there for Audit and Standards in terms of, you know, having that overview of how complaints performance is improving or hopefully improving. But I think primarily the idea is that it will be this committee that is primarily the overseer sort of of complaints. And then in terms of what's going to full council, it's the element of the responsibility being reserved to this committee, that's really what we need to get signed off at full council, and then that obviously enshrines the role of the deputy leader as well. And just to say, obviously councillor Belbin mentioned that the short timescales, colleagues are aware that there's been a lot of work done in terms of improving complaints performance across the council, there's still a lot of work to do. But on the back of these changes, there's another raft of training, there's reminders going out, there's much more emphasis on what people have to do and when they have to do it by. So I think this will act as a bit of a, give some momentum really to making, bringing those changes on.
I think, just very, very briefly, it would be kind of remiss of me not to link this report slide with the previous report. So you'll see from this report, I have a direct responsibility for this code and for a little, like, a lead member of responsibility, actually, in terms of advocating for this and pushing the performance and really working with and across the council to ensure that we can get to this in terms of performance position. That doesn't give me accountability for all of adult social care's complaints, and what it does give me is the ability to have conversations with adult social care and understand the challenges that this code might bring, and to be able to bring things forward centrally within the council to address those issues. That clearly links back to the conversation about customer experience strategy, because every single one of these formal complaints we get is generally by and large because we've not got it right for a customer earlier down the line. So the trick of this, actually ultimately, is to get better, actually, dealing with our customers in the first place, to be perfectly frank. So, you know, that felt remiss of me not to make that point at this point.
Thank you, Tom, it's an important point. All of these items that we've discussed today are intrinsically linked. David, do you want to just come back in?
Yeah. I don't know, it's like going to a Jesus and Mary Chain gig. Sorry, niche, yes. I was going to, yeah, just to answer councillor Otten's, they'll be going to the AGM, the changes, they'll be, my recommendations for changes to the constitution will be part of those.
Thank you very much. Possibly the first reference to the Jesus and Mary Chain in a committee meeting. I stand to be corrected, so, you know, if you want to dig back through the council minutes and find that, but I suspect probably not. Okay, on that note, let's look at the recommendations then. That we approve the revised City Council Complaint Handling Policy, the revised, yeah, sorry, the revised City Council Complaint Handling Policy, that we recommend for council that the role of deputy leader of the council should include being the lead member for customer experience. Lead member responsibilities for complaints are reserved to this committee, and that appropriate amendments are made to the constitution. Are colleagues happy with those recommendations? Lovely, thank you very much indeed. Okay, item number 12 is Network Services Contract Award. To give it its full name, Network Services Contract Award, Software-Defined Wide-Area Network Service. And colleagues, if you could introduce yourselves first before introducing the report.
Yeah, hi, I'm John Rayner, I'm the Head of ICT Delivery.
Hi, I'm Mike Weston, the Director of Digital Innovation at ICT.
Thank you very much for joining us today. I'll hand it to you to briefly introduce the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So the purpose of this report is to seek approval to commission a new SD-WAN network service from an external provider for a period of five years. It's a three plus two with an estimated value of 3.6 million. The current contract with VMB expires on the 31st of May 2024. It's been in place since 2014 and provides three sort of key services. First bit is 255 wide area network, so WAN circuits, of which 103 provide internet connectivity for schools, and then 152 around corporate locations. Second bit is a managed service covering the delivery, the support and the maintenance of all those links. And then the third element is a managed local area network, a LAN service. With the contract due to expire, there's a necessity to contract these services again. The WAN circuits and subsequent support services are an absolute necessity for all ICT services to function within the council. Without this service, we have no ICT. Our customers or end users cannot log on to their laptops, there is no email, no access to business critical applications and so forth. This proposal links to the council's strategy, aims at being a good council and delivering high-quality services for all. ICT is a supporting and enabling service, providing WAN circuits, enabling our end users or customers to conduct their frontline services. As part of that proposal, we are looking to firstly migrate all of the 255 sites, excuse me, from the current IPvN solution to an SD-WAN solution. There are numerous benefits for an SD-WAN solution, SD-WAN standing for Software-Defined Wide-Area Network, including a cloud first, fitting in with our digital principles, enabling direct local access to the internet. There is efficiencies in place within network traffic routing, enabling site connections as opposed to all traffic routing to the core, which is town hall and then out to the internet. This enables a more resilient infrastructure, so should town hall, the core kind of site lose, have a loss in power, for example, all other locations will remain unaffected under the new solution. Additionally, this provides performance improvements as there is less network activity and latency, and there is simplicity in support and maintenance of the solution going through with a software-defined solution. And obviously, under the current climate, there is also an improved security capability over the existing solution. There's a number, sorry, the next element is there's a number of bandwidth increases to bring all circuits up to a minimum of 100 meg. This is largely prevalent within the schools' traded services. By commissioning with the current vendor, so VMB, we are able to minimise the cost of change. There are zero upfront costs of the hardware or for the new SD-WAN infrastructure, there are zero dual-running costs as new circuits are provided by the same supplier, there are zero consultant and project management costs for the transition work provided by that supplier, there's minimal downtime as both circuits are also with the same supplier. All of that, there is a potential cost avoidance estimated at around 900k. And then overall, across the whole of the new proposal, there is cost savings of circa 120k by bringing the LAN managed service in-house, as we now have the skills and the capacity in-house to manage this function. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike?
Just to add, the increased bandwidth enables us to address one of the major issues that came back from our employee survey, which was the performance of IT needs to improve, and that's what we're trying to do with this by moving to the latest and greatest technology for networks, and it takes away a lot of capital investment that we would normally do by moving to cloud solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of councillor Hurst? Just councillor Hurst.
Thank you, Chair. I know you'll be able to understand this, you'll be able to answer this, and I know it will be somewhere in the report, but in my previous experience I've had, it was around emergency situations and flooding and things like that, and the emergency plan went into great detail about where everything was in the gold operation room, including the location of the kettle, but what it didn't make any allowance for was the fact that the location of the gold room would be flooded. So does this allow more flexibility if we did have an extreme weather event or, you know, sometimes in the town hall, if it's very hot or if it's very wet or if it's very cloudy or rainy, we sometimes don't get any signal, is that going to help the situation? Just for practical operational purposes?
We've already addressed that issue by moving our servers out to the cloud, so a lot of our network capability and our storage is out in the cloud anyway, and we encourage hybrid work, and so the fact that people can now access from home or from alternative locations has already addressed that issue as part of our response to Covid.
Lovely, thank you.
Councillor Miskos wants to come in.
Yes, genuinely, thanks for bringing the paper. I think you brought new lexicon for us, SD-WAN, which is an education for me, so thank you very much. But seriously, I think the paper is really important, isn't it? Because actually it does talk about bandwidth improvements, which is really important, as you highlight, for our council officers and for them being able to perform their roles, but also to schools across the city, because we know that it's really important that they have the bandwidth to be able to deliver the sorts of curriculums that we would hope that they'd be able to deliver that would be fit for this century and not the last century. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. So the recommendation for us is that it's recommended that this committee approves the commissioning of a new SD-WAN network service from an external provider for a period of five years with an estimated value of 3.6 million as set out. Are colleagues happy to support the recommendation? Great, thank you very much indeed for joining us. So that is the conclusion of the open part of the committee meeting. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, there is a following agenda item which is, will need to be heard in a closed session because it contains exempt information. So at this point, I will just pause for a moment, and we will kindly ask members of the public and any press to leave, and we'll pause the webcast.